This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Well, at the risk of jinxing this, I now see a picture of Mr. Johnson, so I think we're ready to call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for your patience as we fought through some technical issues to have everyone in the meeting that needed to be. Uh, Maida, are we in compliance with open meetings law?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's roll call for forum.
Commissioner Harder.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Nordine.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Becca.
Here.
Commissioner Clements.
Here.
Thank you, uh, those of you that are able, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item in our agenda is the public forum. We do not have anyone signed up for public comments, so I will take just 10 seconds to welcome Mr. Michael Johnson as our new superintendent to his first board meeting. And of course, you get to be basically first on the agenda. I will turn it over to you, Mr. Johnson, for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Commissioner Nordine. Um, good evening, all commissioners and executive team members. Apologize for technical difficulties here. Um, it's a great feeling and an honor to share my first board report with you this evening. While I've been able to be part of a few Microsoft Groups meetings in May and June, as well as principals interviews committees, board meetings and fall reopening updates, I hadn't officially sat in the chair. Last Wednesday, it was my first official day in the Eau Claire Area School District. I was so excited to experience it. Uh, the staff, families and community have made me feel very welcome. Our administrative assistant to the superintendent, Maida Miskey, has been an outstanding positive force during my transition. I'm very thankful for her assistance. I also wish to publicly thank Dr. Marian Hartebeck for her assistance throughout my transition in May and June as well. I was included on many meetings and correspondence and really appreciated the time she spent with me. On Wednesday, I would particularly like to thank the HR team, Ashley Bauer, Hannah Jones, Megan Price, payroll team with Tammy Row and the IT staff, Siri Larson and Brandon Fells, all of whom helped me settle in within the first few hours. And the exec team, Kim, Jim, Abby and Kay, they've been wonderful in keeping me apprised of extremely important information and helping me transition in. I was able to speak with each of the members of the executive team individually to ask them specific questions about the organization and their hopes and dreams for the district. Was able to do the same with Dr. Nordine last Wednesday, and I will be scheduling more individual meetings with other commissioners, administrators, directors and staff in the upcoming weeks. I'd like to thank the board also for their welcoming gift, and I appreciate their kindness and generosity. Presently, we've been dedicating a large amount of time with the committees of the reopening of schools task force. Incident Commander Kim Kohler and I had been included on an initial meeting last week with reps from the county health department, as well as our county superintendents. Kim, the section leaders and the task force members have all been examining options and sharing models for the school year and what it may look like for students and staff. The model for the reopening will vary depending on the step we're at in the reopening of the county as a whole. Furthermore, we've been analyzing the results of the family and staff survey, which received over 3,900 responses. The task force will continue to develop their proposal in the upcoming days. We're also working through the searches for a few administrative positions, including the Meadowview principalship and the DeLonge assistant principalship. We're working through those search and interview processes and hope to have those positions and others filled quickly with the best possible candidates. I will have other announcements after the employment report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for my board president's report. Though we haven't met for a full board meeting in a bit over a month, the board has been very busy. I spent the better part of three weeks helping with our meals program for kids living in the district. I was working several days at North Star Middle School at the drive-through line and also was able to ride one of the Meals on Yellow Wheels routes leaving from DeLonge. Now that Dr. Johnson and Commissioner Zur also took part volunteering for this project. And I just want to say that I think that the preparing food and making sure that our kids get meals both every day through the spring closure and now through the summer is one of the most important things that we're doing in our district to take care of our students. And I want to thank everybody from food nutrition and everybody across the district that has been helping out to get that done. It's been, it was amazing to see that and be able to help in action. And I'm just very proud of our district for taking care of our kids in one of the most fundamental ways that we can. So thank you. Secondly, Dr. Becca, Commissioner Clements and myself have been participating in a book study through the Wisconsin Public Education Network on a book entitled Despite the Best Intentions: How Racial Inequality Drives in Good Schools by Amanda Lewis and John Diamond. Now, we're learning alongside 150 to 200 other educators, administrators and board members from across Wisconsin in a virtual setting about how inequity exists in school, even in school districts that appear to be successful. We look forward to sharing our learning with all of you and helping it inform our policy and practice work regarding equity. Finally, Mr. Johnson, Commissioners Clements, Harder, Zur and myself all attended a session entitled Coherent Governance 101 regarding our efforts to move toward a governing model that will streamline our goals and workflow as a board and administration. I've had great conversations about this session or argusations, as Commissioner Zur dubbed them, about how we can potentially use this model to shape the work of the board for academic success and our shared commitment toward significant progress in anti-racist and equitable policy and practice. Uh, I believe we are still currently scheduled for a work session with the full board around coherent governance with some guests from Chippewa Falls at our next meeting where all of us will get to ask focused questions, helping us to move forward. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda are the school board committee reports. We'll start with budget development.
Thank you. We did, good evening. We did, uh, for the budget development. Uh, and really the biggest item, sorry, I'm getting a little feedback. The biggest item that we talked about is really the main item on the agenda tonight, which is the one-to-one device question. And, uh, I think I can safely speak for the other board members on budget that we're really grateful to have this recommendation come forward at this time. Uh, and really look forward to hearing more about it in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder. We'll go to Leap.
Sorry about that. I was slow on the draw to turn my mute off. Um, Leap last met on June 9th. That was before the June 22nd school board meeting, so they haven't met since that time. Uh, their next meeting is on September 8th. Uh, in the meantime, we began to work with our communications consultant because the Leap team would like to develop a communication for all staff on opportunities for innovation, including Leap, that we would work on for the fall and communicate with all staff when they are back.
Thank you. We're going to hear Demo and Trends presentation tonight on their work, so I'll skip that in the interest of providing one minute extra time. Later on, we'll go on to policy and governance. Policy and governance has met twice since our last full board meeting and has been actively refocusing our work around the lens of developing anti-racist and equitable policy. We have identified seven areas of potential interest to begin working for, as Dr. Johnson said in our last meeting, visible substantive changes in how ECSD policies are carried out. Uh, the areas that we're currently considering are hiring, instructional groupings, curriculum, SROs, open enrollment and alternate school requests, internet access and devices, which obviously we'll be talking about some tonight, and athletics. Please note that the list is not exhaustive, but rather there are areas that committee members and administrative liaisons saw potential for reevaluation right off the bat. We will meet this Wednesday at 1:00 PM, and that meeting will center around coming up with a priority order in order to, uh, for these seven areas and perhaps uncovering more, as well as developing a procedure for reexamining these policies with an anti-racist lens, which will include some subcommittee work likely, and making sure that diverse voices are highlighted in the process. We are highly motivated to stand by the board's commitment to strong action in this area. Uh, we'll now move to the legislative update. Dr. Johnson.
So we have, uh, the passing of a new Title IX regulations on sexual harassment, sexual discrimination and sexual assault, education and pro activities, uh, that are supposedly going into effect on August 14th of 2020. However, some of you may know our current attorney general has joined other, uh, 17 other states in filing a complaint against the initiation of these particular regulations, so I'm not sure whether to be on hold or not. We have some special education emergency licensure updates in terms of trying to fill the need for special education teachers by offering an alternative route to the foundations of reading examination that's required for state licensure. We have DPI put out a clarification on the duration of COVID-19 waivers, contrary to popular belief where in their, uh, language where it said that it would be for four years or how the language is written, it was only for the academic year 2019, 2020. So DPI just added clarification that it was a one-year over the COVID-19 waivers are one year versus the four years as it's seen on their site. Uh, also, uh, DPI had released some further bulletin guidance on special education delivery during the pandemic. If those of you are not familiar, what was really, uh, our students with disabilities were severely left behind, not only in our particular state nationally, as it relates to moving to online remote learning. Uh, also, the State Emergency Operations Center and DPI had a partnership to distribute cloth masks and infrared thermometers to all Wisconsin schools. Uh, each school district had to submit a notice. I'm not sure where, if, or Eau Claire Area School District participated in this reallocation. Also, some of you have probably seen a WIA released a guidance on resuming summer activities and as it pertains to sports. DPI also released their school restart guidance, uh, guidelines. Uh, and then the U.S. Department of Education issued an interim final rule as it pertains to the distribution of the CARE Act funding and the equitable services with private schools. And DPI has released revised mono-academic standards for English language arts, personal financial literacy and physical education. And then the Department of Public Instruction, DPI, has released aid estimates for public school districts this upcoming year based on, uh, previous, the previous budget that was, uh, was passed. No one knows kind of how close or far behind that rejection will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. Board members have been provided information about these items, and they will be acted on with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it can be pulled out and voted on separately. Tonight's items are the minutes of June 1st, 2020, the minutes of closed session, June 11th, 2020, financial report, May 2020, gifts in the amount of $42,651.44 for the period of May 1st, 2020 through May 31st, 2020, payment of all bills in the amount of $8,472,144.29, and net payroll in the amount of $5,491,152.37 for the period of May 1st, 2020 through May 31st, 2020, and human resources employment report. I would hear a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
We have a second.
Leave Lori second.
Oh, thank you. I must have missed the, my sound is a little in and out tonight. I apologize. We, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Harder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Zur.
Yes.
Commissioner Becca.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll now move to our individually considered resolution. Tonight is the budget requests for one-to-one devices. Uh, we'll turn it over to Abby Johnson and Jim Schmidt.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna get ready to share my screen. Does it sharing? Okay, can you, can you see it? Okay?
Yes, we can, Abby. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Commissioner Nordine. Um, so as Dr. Nordine said, Jim and I are gonna present tonight on the budget request and the one-to-one devices. And before we dig into the details, I do have a little bit of a budget update from 1920. And I do want everybody on the board to remember that this is very preliminary. Um, we won't have final numbers until closer to the end of August because we have a lot of reconciling and things that happen between now and mid-August in preparation for the audit. And so, again, this is the point in time where we're at and what we think is gonna happen, but, um, I can't confirm that until later on. Since we have some new board members, I thought it might be helpful to review kind of the categories that we talk about when we talk about our budget. Um, so the biggest category is really related to salary and benefits, and that's all staff salary and benefits. When we talk about contracted services, that's our transportation costs, our substitute costs, our open enrollment out when we pay other school districts for students that reside in the Eau Claire School District, but have chosen to attend a different district, and then payment to other government entities. Supplies is really just that. It's consumable supplies that are used in the classroom, it's library books, it's workbooks, and equipment that we need for curriculum that costs less than $4,999. And then, um, in the capital category, that's our five-year capital, the big projects that we do every year that comes before the board, and then any equipment needs that we have that are over $5,000 individually. Insurance category is our liability, our property and our workers' comp insurance. Um, our transfer to Fund 27, that's our special education offset. And I think some of you will know that as part of our, um, tax levy that we do every year, our special ed funds, um, the categorically doesn't offset all of the costs of the services. And so our general fund subsidizes those costs because that's how, um, the balance is out at the end of the year. And so that transfer, it's important to recognize that it's there. Um, but it looks like a really big number when you see it, and just keep in mind, it's when you put it all together, that's why that's there. And then this, one of the smallest categories is related to debt, other, dues and fees. So for a quick five-minute overview, um, hopefully that'll help kind of get in your brain what we're talking about when we break it down. Um, so when we look at our budget for 1920, you can see we're estimating, whoops, I hit another screen. Sorry. Um, we are estimating our ending salary fringe to be in about $113 million. Um, where that was estimated through June 30th, what we're estimating right now is about $111.4 million. Um, some of that is due to, um, positions that we weren't able to fill, and we filled them with substitutes. Some of that's due to COVID and the fact that, um, you know, we were off of school, and then if people resigned, we didn't necessarily fill those positions just due to the unusual nature of what the spring looked like for us. And so, um, that right now is projected to be under budget, about $1.8 million. When we talk about contracted services, um, our budget's about $24.6 million, and, um, we're estimating it to end up around $22.7 million. The biggest change in there is the transportation cost. So because we weren't transporting students, um, from March 17th on, um, obviously that had an impact work, contracted service budget. When we look at supplies, um, we're estimating, um, our budget was about $5.5 million. We're estimating about $5.2 million will be spent. In the capital area, we were estimating about $1.2 million, and we spent just, we're estimating about a million. Um, our insurance costs, we were projecting $988,000, and, um, we're projecting that to be just over a million dollars. Um, again, you can see that transfer to Fund 27, and because I don't have a guess at where that's gonna land, I just use our budget number. And then our debt dues and, um, other, we were projecting about $305,000, and, um, we're expecting that to end about $478,000. And the reason for the big difference in that category has to do with the leases that we utilized last year for our technology. Um, and that falls under the debt category, and we, um, decided that, I think, right after we adopted the budget or right before, and we knew that that would create a variance for us. So when you put all of those items and categories together, um, as of right now, I would estimate we're gonna be about $4.1 million, um, cost savings due to unspent areas in our budget. Some of it's gonna be due to COVID. Some of it's gonna be due to positions that we weren't able to find the right people, you know, and a whole bunch of other things that happens. Um, and just again, keep in mind that this is what we're estimating, but the actuals won't be available until mid to late August, and we'll update the board at that point. So when we're talking about our budget and planning for the 2021 school year, um, I think Commissioner Johnson said in his report that the early aid estimates were released on July 1st. And so, um, that was correct, and that early estimate is based upon what the current Bionim budget is, which is number one, which provides an additional 179 per pupil, and that's about $4.9 million for the Eau Claire School District. Um, if you've been paying attention or been at budget development, we've been talking about that, and, you know, I've shared that I'm not exactly sure that we're gonna get that amount because, um, we know that there's been a lot of discussions in the legislature that things may be different. And so with that, we've done a couple of additional scenarios that we've shared at budget development as well as the board. And so that's where we get number two and number three. So number two, we've heard some discussion about a zero per pupil increase, and so then we use the revenue limit that was set for 1920. And then number three, we've heard some discussion as well of some reductions in the per pupil count. Um, we've heard lots of numbers out there, but 200, um, has come up multiple times. We're not sure that that's gonna happen. But again, we want to try to be realistic as we're projecting our budget and trying to make good decisions for the students in our district. Um, in a reminder, the commitments that the board has already made, um, and again, there hasn't been any new commitments since the May 18th meeting, and I shared this information at that point, um, but salary increases of $1.8 million were approved. The CPI increase of $387,000 was, was approved, and also the health insurance increase of $1.9. When you add all of those together, that's about $4.2 million. So if we look at in summary what the budget options might look like, um, option one is based upon, um, you know, that additional 179, which is what is in the Bionim budget, you can see that our total expenses, our total revenue would be about $168.5 million. We're expecting our expenses based upon what we know the board's already committed to to be about $167.7, leaving a difference of about $1.3 million. If we look at option two, where we say we're not getting any per pupil increase, um, we're estimating our revenues to be about $166.5 million. Our expense is about $168.5, and so that gives us a deficit of about $1.5 million. And in the third scenario, um, which is a negative per pupil, we would expect our revenues to be about $164 million and our expenses to be $168, leaving about a $3.7 million deficit. Um, and again, those are very preliminary estimates. We're still working through the budget process as far as the expenses go, but I just included, um, what the board had already committed to, and we started with the 1920 adopted budget as well. So with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Jim, who will talk to us about the devices and the need.
Those watching from the, um, outside might wonder about what one-to-one, uh, devices means. That means one device for every, mobile device for every student in the district. Um, just want to be clear that, that, uh, people on the outside understand what we were looking at in terms of that language. So, and we shared with budget development about the need for devices, and we have, um, James Martin, along with his tech staff, have helped us identify, um, what it would take to try to equip each one of our students with a device. And so, the rationale or the reason for this is simply, um, and we will, uh, inequity issue to provide our, each of our students the opportunity to have devices to be connected to, um, connected to our, our staff when they are both at school and at home. Um, we'll talk about what a bring-your-own-device model would look like, where it would be a hybrid model, but we'll first start with the model of, um, each student having a laptop or iPad. Our current model is that, uh, we use laptops in grade seven through 12. And so, um, earlier in the 2019, 20 school year, right toward, uh, it was actually the meeting where we approved the budget. We also approved the purchase of refreshing several, uh, aged devices, laptops at the high school and middle school. So, and that, um, got us to, back to where we were originally in terms of having devices for, it was mostly for English science, um, special education and a few small, um, one-off classrooms. Um, and then this purchase of laptops for, um, would be, um, that first line would be about three, about 3,700 laptops, which would finish us off in grade seven through 12 and put a laptop in every student's hands. The pricing that you're seeing in front of you is actually, we have three columns. One is if you, uh, the first one, which is the second column, the first, the first column with, with dollar amounts, the estimated purchase, uh, option cost would be as if we purchased outright. The second column, uh, with dollars in it, or the second one from the right, is the estimated lease cost option for 2021. Um, that is about a quarter of the cost. It's a little bit more than a quarter because of interest on a lease. And then the last column is what that would cost. That lease would cost over four years. So you can see that the lease would cost more than, um, than the actual outright purchase. Of course, there are, um, you do not have, you would not be using all your dollars out of, um, out of the budget or the district reserves. Um, so you would have that advantage of, of using the lease. Um, you also, we don't know how cost fluctuations are typically, our technology costs have stayed pretty stable. Um, but we don't know if they're, how those costs might fluctuate over the course of four years. What it does give you, and Abby talked about this on an earlier slide, it does give you some budget predictability rather than having cliffs and valleys. It does give you a predictable four-year spend, um, and so that, that amount would be, um, would you be able to plan for that. Now, you'll notice on the next line, the purchase option, those are the laptop cases, and that would actually replace all of the cases, or not replace, it would be a first purchase for, um, all of the new laptops plus all of the laptops that we purchased earlier this year. Um, we have not sent them home until now, um, so it was, uh, we were not prepared in that, uh, perspective of having cases on laptops. And that just extends your life so that drops and, um, other nicks and bruises will not take heavy wear and tear on a device. Um, so you'll notice that that is, would be a straight-out purchase. So under the, um, last two columns on the right, that dollar amount carries over because you're really not leasing them. That would be part of the lease option cost. In other words, if you're, if you're leasing devices, you are still purchasing, um, those, and that amount doesn't change after four years because it's really a one-time cost. Um, the third line is the iPads for pre-K through two. Um, and we'll talk to you in a little bit about the data, um, that we are seeing with pre-K two. And we have traditionally avoided purchasing devices in, uh, in those grade levels. We have not wanted our students to have heavy access to mobile devices at a young age. The rationale is simply access, especially remote access. If you recall, if even, whether you're on the board or whether you were just tuning in to watch, back in, um, in April, we did a presentation to Kelly Joyner-Burton. A kindergarten teacher shared what they were doing at Lakeshore, and she was talking about how they posted things on Facebook and how that interacted with their, how they interacted with their, um, families. And we also know that that depended on families' ability to access that platform. And so while we are not wanting our students to be deeply, uh, involved in an iPad throughout the day at those younger grades, we do know that it is likely that learning in person will be interrupted, and remote access is, is really, um, the motive, the driving motivation here. We do have a model at the, um, younger grades of using iPads as learning centers. So there, when you're doing, uh, like, uh, when we're doing reading, uh, instruction, we will have guided reading. We'll have reading to self, and we'll also have listening, and we have used iPads in the listening stations. So students, uh, um, will have that opportunity and have used an iPad in that setting. So it is not unusual for us. We will have, we will have, um, places in the curriculum to leverage that technology in addition to using for remote learning. But really, our primary driver for those younger grades is that remote learning. And then finally, and that, that is about, um, 3,500 iPads, just a bit over, um, 3,522 to be exact. Um, and then for, um, and then you can see, also see that we also have cases for those iPads as well. We are not having to purchase any extra cases because the cases that we, um, uh, we've always, we always have had iPad cases just simply because it's a much more exposed device than a laptop. We also, in this model, in the laptops and iPads, also plan for attrition. Um, we know that we will have damage. That is very typical. Um, I'm very happy to report that the rate of damage that we see in our district is far below what we see across, uh, the state and nation. So our students are good stewards of our the state and nation. So our students are good stewards of our, of our, our investments. On the staff end, we have, Abby, I think I need you to move that one forward for me. There we are. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Abby. Oh, gotta bring her back. All right. On the staff end, so right now, our staff have desktops. And this, most of our staff, some have laptops that have positions that require mobility. Someone who's a traveling certified staff member that is not going to be at a particular location will have a, already have a laptop. So this adds laptops so that all of our, our certified staff have that mobile device so that they can do instruction both at remotely and in person. I will tell you that it will be given that our staff have, our staff right now have been using student laptops to be able to conduct their remote work. It will be a very difficult move for them to return to a world without that because they're not able to do exactly what we're doing here. Our ability not only to instruct, but our ability to collaborate has changed dramatically. And we can pull people together. This used to be a pipe dream for us and now it's real. And we could pull people together in a variety of locations to immediately collaborate and, and solve problems. So this would get us there. That's about 1,233 laptops. Docking station's number is a little bit less. And we would, we would not purchase, we would not lease those. So the, the there is a purchase option again for laptops, and then there's a lease option, and then you'll see the first year and then the four-year total cost. The docking stations would be a one-time cost. A docking station, for those of you that haven't heard this discussion before, the things that connect to a normal computer in a classroom, your audio visual, so your, your sound, your video feed to the projector, other tools to the internet or the ethernet cables, things like that. If you plug and unplug repeatedly, you're going to damage the ports and the cables. And so you put a docking station, so it's just a one, you drop your laptop on, snap it in, and then it works like a regular desktop. And then you unsnap it to work remotely. So that's what that docking station purchases. Without that docking station, you're going to be just purchasing tons of cables and connectors and things like that that are over time are going to damage because of plugging in and unplugging and really spending a lot of valuable time doing something that could be solved through a docking station. The staff monitors, those are for both instructional staff and support staff. The monitors, we do have monitors currently. They would require adapters because the laptops, we are now into the HDMI world, so we'd have to have adapters to be able to convert from a traditional, from a, from a HDMI signal to, to the pin signal or the pins and the old-fashioned pins. We do have some Project Lead the Way laptops. We have some specialized laptops we'd have to purchase as well. We also have iPads for staff and those iPads are for our instructional staff. They would I actually got to make sure, yep, so for our, for our instructional support staff to be able to support students in the classroom. They also would come with keyboards and cases, which you see on the next line. And then finally, our music staff does require a unique solution for iPads because of the software and, and technology that they use to support students. And so those are small in number. The music is a group of 31. The Project Lead the Way is a group of a dozen. The support staff is about 260. So, so the, these, this would round out our, our, our instructional staff and support staff as well. And allow them for both in-person and remote support so that we don't miss a beat as we had to switch from one model to another, which is very likely as we look forward into the next school year. Abby, on the next slide, I want to just talk a little bit about what would the bring your own device model look like? And the things that we focus on, and then what are other districts doing? So in the bring your own device model, and Abby, that let's go to the next slide. The first challenge we have is actually identifying the number of students that would actually need a device. So if you say anyone who needs a device, let us know if you don't. You can use your own, which sounds appealing and it sounds like a cost savings. Right now, we know that about 21% of our students, or at a minimum 21% of our students in grade seven, 12, requested a laptop going into the closure. We still are deploying devices into the summer. The school year ended nearly four months ago. Students, when we asked them, do you need a device? The answer often was no. And then they didn't realize that mom or dad or sibling was going to be needing the device. So there was device competition in the home. They also thought maybe a phone was a device. It would serve their needs. It did not end up serving the needs for many of them. And so the, the number that we actually would, would be confident, our level of confidence would be low. If we actually had to identify a number. Bring your own device also means that you're dealing with multiple platforms, which would increase our tech support and interruptions to learning. So to give you an example, we had a student call in to our help desk line. And they were using a home, a device from home. And it took about an hour of one of our tech staff to finally resolve that the reason why the student cannot access Canvas to access the content, remember this took about an hour, and this is just one student, was that there was an ad blocker that was activated on the laptop. And it was preventing Canvas from being fully functional for that student. As a tech team, we can't tell that family to turn that ad blocker off. Because that's a personal device and they have it on there to protect the, their personal interests. So we end up spending a lot of time diagnosing and trying to solve, and then still confronted with a problem that we are really, you know, we, we could, we could tell the student what the problem is and they can make that choice. But it becomes somewhat of a challenge. The other thing as well is, as I was my own personal laptop has my Quicken on it. It has my TurboTax on it. And all those things would be waltzing their way into school as my, as my child would be, would be logging in and doing work. And if that, if there's any, if that device ever gets compromised, all that personal information from our, from our families is on there. So it really is something to think about. Both in terms of having a predictable, reliable platform and also one that we are not exposing the data from, from our families. Bring your own device also means that everyone can bring it every day. So if you say, well, you know, if you say to your child, you can use our device, but I need it on a particular day, the, the child will be, will not be in luck for that day and then is left without a device. Also, personal devices end up on our guest network. Our own devices end up on, if you ever go onto the district, there's a wireless network. And that has all the security and authentication and access that is not guaranteed, or that is not granted to those that come in on the guest network. And so ECSD devices have a greater level of security and access. And likewise, they are also filtered appropriately as well. So if you take a district device home and you go on a site that is not appropriate, it will block it even from your home. So we route the traffic back through our own internet filters. And those are all things that we can control. And that's part of COPA and SIPA, all those protections, the Child Internet Protection Act and, and online privacy protection, all those things are in place by filtering with our, with our devices. So so we strongly, while we could price this out, our confidence would be much lower. It would be a percentage of what we saw with the student devices. But again, you bring in all these other issues once you go to bring your own device. It becomes quite a challenge. Really, the, the greatest challenge on the on the, if we purchase the device as opposed to bring your own device is hoping that our kids have charged devices and that their, you know, that their item comes charged. So it really just becomes power. And then the other one just says that they're, that they take care of it and don't damage it. But, but we go to the bring your own device and the challenges are pretty significant. As we look to one of our, one of our approaches has been, let's make good decisions. And, and not necessarily follow what other districts are doing, but sometimes check in other districts to see if, to, to check our thinking, to calibrate, to see if we're on the same page as other districts. And so we did reach out to other districts to see what they're doing in this area. And so our next slide has the the device plans in other districts. And what you'll see is by the rank, it means the size of the district in the state. So Green Bay is the fourth largest district in the state. Waukesha, seventh, Sheboygan. The ones that are not on here, we just weren't able to get information from every device. We really didn't try to dig into Milwaukee. That's a whole different type of atmosphere or ecosystem that we have. But you'll see where our district, we're 11,500 students and you can see what they did in 1920 and what they're going to do in 2021. And you'll see the significant shift. Other districts are seeing things the same way we are. They're really expanding that access to all students at all levels. We have a much more robust pre-K program than other districts. Which is why we have pre-K in there, but you see Green Bay has it in there as well. And then you can also see what they're going to be providing to their teacher staff as well. So while I don't want to make a decision just because others are doing it, it does reaffirm our thinking in terms of our planning. This is data that we pulled after we developed our plan. And it is very consistent with what we have, have been thinking. And you can see that the trend is going there as well. And as we looked back in February of this year, Ed Week, the National Publication for Educators, at that time, this before the COVID closure, 68% of secondary schools were one-to-one. So just about two-thirds. And just under half at 44% of elementary. It'll be very interesting to see what that, what those data look like when we move into the next year. But I have a feeling it's, we're going to see some of the same trends you're seeing on the slide in front of you. When we look then at reopening needs for 2021, obviously we have the devices. And then I'm going to transition to Abby, but one of the other pieces is we may have some tech needs that we haven't even discussed. And the diagram on the left really is part of our challenge for if we do have to do a hybrid model where we are not allowed to have every student every day and we only have part of our students with us. Some students will be in group A and with the teacher in part will be in group B. Would they be at home? And we have been looking at what those instructional models would look like. One model is you have ability to record what a teacher is doing and or, or, or stream what a teacher is doing, both audio and video. We've been looking at different cost solutions for that. Some of, and again, it depends on the instructional model. So we have yet to finalize that and we're working over that, but we're hoping we'll be able to keep that cost contained. But we may be coming back to you on July 20th to discuss that a little bit more because of this, this instructional model is that is so different. We've been working with some vendors in this area to talk about our training for our staff and how we can really optimize learning in this type of environment. And so that is, that is to be determined on the, the tech needs, other tech needs for reopening of schools. And then Abby, I'll let you take the second half of the slide.
Thanks, Jim. So a lot of things also kind of related to the reopening of schools needs for 2021. You know, we're still working through our staffing model and plan, our supplies just related to cleaning and PPE. Those are unknown. Again, I'm going to reiterate what Jim said, that hopefully we'll have some more information to present to the board on July 20th with some more things figured out for you. And then in addition, the salary and benefits of the 4.2 million that we talked about earlier that the board has already committed to for 2021. So really, the question before the board tonight is what, what should the recommendation be for us for the 2020, 21 school year? And so you know, we talked a lot about this as an administrative team and we looked at it from the budget standpoint. We looked at it from you know, the student standpoint and really the best, our recommendation is to go with the lease option because of the unknown related to the state budget. You know, we'd love to say, yep, let's go ahead and make the purchase, but that's a really big price tag. And we just started getting ourselves in a better spot with our fund balance and kind of you know, getting kind of back on track. We've been fallen behind a little bit the last couple of years. And so we've had a couple of years to really kind of dig ourselves out and keep moving forward. And so the lease option really provides a lot of predictability. Jim and I have had some conversations about the fact that if we just committed a certain dollar amount every year to tech needs as far as devices go, that would look similar to the capital plan that we do each year and bring forward to the board. And that really does help level out our budget because then we just know we're committed to X number of dollars each year for the budget related to devices. And so at this point in time, our administrative recommendation is really to go ahead and pursue the lease option. So what questions do you have for us that we can answer for you?
Thank you, Abby. Thank you, Jim. We appreciate all this information. And as we open it up to comments and questions, we've kind of got this system going out between the board members where if you'd like to be recognized, just go ahead and unmute. And I will recognize you when you do. I'm going to, I see both Commissioners Harder and Johnson. I'll start with Commissioner Harder just because you're the Budget Development Chair and I will take your commentary first and then we'll go to Dr. Johnson.
Great. Thanks. This presentation, especially for this recommendation, I think it's just timely and just a really, I consider it a really valuable step forward for the district. Just a quick question on, since we're talking about the lease versus buy option. And it didn't occur to me to clarify this before now, but with the leasing versus the buying outright, do we, is that a lease, like you might like lease a car where you returned it at the end of the four years? Or do you own it at the end of the four years?
That's a great question. It's a lease to own.
Okay, great. So it's essentially we're, we're, we're paying a little bit of extra interest, but it's, it's the same as if we were to buy it outright, essentially.
Right.
Yeah, great, great. Yeah, thanks. Thanks again for this, this report recommendation.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I actually have a couple of questions. So in, in, in your cost, are internet hotspots included in your cost at all? Or are they, are they not?
No, they're not. So this was simply around the devices and that would actually be one of those other costs that was, we talked about startup costs for next year. There are some moving parts on that. The state has been developing a model where they are trying to work with our local internet providers to allow districts to identify homes that do not have internet access and provide internet service to, to disadvantaged families at a cheaper rate than our hotspots currently cost. Our hotspots right now run us $40 a month per device. This model would be around $30 a month. We also had a lot of support, actually not a lot, complete support from our Oakley Public School Foundation to support hotspots for students that needed them during the closure. And so we will have to have a discussion with them about if they have interest in supporting that model moving forward. So that would be a determination that we still have to make about if that, whether or not that would be a district cost or whether or not we would provide, we would have external support again.
Right. So in regards to this, this leasing format every four years, you know, I, I think all of us are pretty much in a, a device is probably no good after the fourth year anyways. And so I, I'm just, I'm curious as it, as it relates to if is, is this a, do you get a new device every, every year? Or are you guys getting, you're having a device maintenance refurbished and then sent back out to students? Is that how, is that kind of how it worked?
Yep. And that refurbishing is internal. But you're right, it's not a new device every year. It's the same device over the four years. We have been able to stretch devices past four years. We have a pretty savvy tech staff. That's not something that we typically like to do, but we have seen devices get stretched to their fifth, sixth, even seventh year. And I know there's some Chromebooks around there that are, that are starting to show their age even beyond that. Typically, your, your level predict, predictability, reliability of a device starts to fade after that fourth year. And so simply what we would do is we would, you, which Abby mentioned earlier, is you would get into this habit of a certain number of dollars every year, go to support device costs. And by stretching that over four years, then at the end of the four years, you'd be looking at, at bringing a new lease in front of the board again.
And if I could just ask one more, then I'll just open and let the rest of the Commissioners talk. But could you just speak to, what's that? Has there been much thought in terms of, I, I guess I wasn't following your training? Because I, I would argue there are, there are both parents as well as staff in the school district that would have to be trained on how to use and use technology appropriately. I, I, I guess what I'm struggling, we would send, say, second grader home with a device or third grader or a high school with a device, well, not in this high school, but elementary school kids home with a device. And neither one of the parents or who the adult would actually know how to assist that particular child with a device. So then we have an elementary kid with a device left to do whatever that is unless the teacher did, you know, I think an excellent job demonstrating to them. So and the same thing is with staff, you know, I, I was shocked to find out that some of our staff in our district, given where they live rural, they don't even own a device at all. And the only time they check email is when they come to work. And they do, and it's only email checking. When we're talking about this utilization of remote learning, remote learning goes way beyond that. And as someone that works on a university campus, you know, undergraduate students who are savvy at social media, be able to make a TikTok video, they perform horribly as it relates to actually online remote learning and working in Canvas. So I'm just, are there training, what's the training aspect of paying for training or support for both parents and staff who are not as savvy as, you know, I guess, other people?
All right. So the, so when someone first All right. So the, so when someone first of all takes a device home, they get, they're given a sheet just about just the basic logistics of the device, how it operates. I mean, we're just talking about like how you turn it on and how you find, find things. When we talk about instruction for students and for, and for staff and for families, for our families, we do provide more resources on our website. So our At Home Learning site had a large number of resources to support. Well, everything from netiquette, you know, the behavior online to some logistical pieces, how you, how you access certain functions on a device and how you also get tech support. We posted our tech support number on there as well. If you go to the district site, you'll see the At Home Learning right on the main page. The other, the other thing for staff is we did create many months ago a virtual learning page for staff with a lot of resources in terms of how to, you know, how to run Microsoft Teams, how to run Canvas courses, things like that, lots of tutorials and lots of how-to. And again, those are functional pieces. So we've had those in places for, for staff. And then our students, we go through a whole, at the elementary level and into middle school, a whole digital citizenship curriculum with them, with our library and media specialists. And then our next step, because again, we, we have been using, a lot of our technology use has really been surrounding, enhancing the classroom experience, not it being the primary classroom experience. And so what we've been doing right now is we've begun a process, and this is a multi-step process that leads us up to the school year of identifying essential outcomes and how we're going to assess students for the year. And then how are we going to instruct that? And then working with teacher leaders to prepare them. And then when their colleagues come back in August for those teacher preparation days, the last week of August, we really have that to, we have, we have kind of cleared the deck, if you will, of all other planned trainings during that time to let our teachers really focus on, when they are back, on that preparation to, for instruction, both in terms of what we want to have accomplished, but how we want to have it accomplished because it's going to be a different environment going into the school year. We've learned a lot of lessons, but we think we can do it a lot better. And so we have a multi-tier approach in terms of trying to support the training of our staff to be much more effective at supporting students moving into the school year.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Commissioner Lyons?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Nordin. A couple of questions, and I just, a opening statement. I think this is a great program, and I think it's a wonderful insurance policy going into the fall. Having said that, I, I'd like to know or hear if you looked at potentially a hybrid approach to purchasing where there was some of the machines that were leased and some owned. Then I'd also like to hear a little bit of information about the timeline. I know that the procurement of this is, is probably a heavy lift than also imaging, get the, getting them into a state where they're usable and then distributed to the students. And then a last question is, what happens with a leased machine? If it's lost or damaged or stolen? What's, what's the, what's, what's the protocol? Do we have a process behind that?
All right. So the mixed model, and I think what you're asking is what if we purchased some of the devices versus leased some of them? Is that correct? And, and some of the, for example, for example, the project lead, the way laptop, something like that, some of them were purchased. We could do, we could increase the number of purchasing that just offsets and moves some, you know, some of them out of the lease column and into the purchase column. So that isn't, you can do different versions, but the, the, the purchase option is hundred percent purchase, buy them all, write, done with it. The lease option is purchasing those smaller items, but the larger quantities, leasing them. If we wanted to shift some of those leased to purchase, you would just be moving some of your costs into year one and then away from years two, three, and four. And so there could be some, we, I mean, that clearly is a sliding scale that we could do. I mean, it would, it would just create some complexity and bids and things like that. In terms of the procurement, and I'm glad you wrote that down because I wrote down the word fall. We, so we're not the first district in this situation, right? Procurement is a real issue for us. There is a very strong likelihood, a really, really high likelihood, we will not see these at the start of the school year. We are looking at sort of a, like a Band-Aid approach to be able to try to get our students through, taking some of those devices that are up near eight years old and seeing if we can just limp those along for the time until we see devices come in. One thing that our James Martin and the staff have done that has been to try to shrink those times a little bit is to get the imaging to take place during production so that we can, so the device comes pre-imaged. That shortens our time on our end, but still, there are supply chains. I mean, there's everything involved in these things. So when you look at a device, it's everything from the, the monitor, the keys and all that that come from different suppliers. And there's just a lot of, you know, we, we talk about the economy has taken a hit in some areas. Well, this is one area that's cooking pretty hot. And I mean, the, it's very difficult to keep up with the, with the demand. So there's a strong likelihood that new devices, especially the laptops, we wouldn't see immediately. And then back to your question about lost and stolen. If it disappears, it's just like, just like my iPhone that I just, just up my kids, you know, where I pay that thing over two years, I'll still be paying for it without a device. So we, we end up just having to continue those payments, sands the device. So it's just one of those risks you take in terms of paying it out over time.
Thank you. Commissioner Zer?
Yeah, I just want to thank you guys for the, the amount of work and particularly for mentioning the, the situation with 4K and 5K. As a, as an early childhood teacher, that was my first inquiry was really how, I mean, I understand it for COVID, I understand it for the situation that we're in right now. My question is how we see those devices being used at those grade levels long-term, knowing that it is perhaps not something we would want incorporated into the classroom all the time. So we're going to purchase some devices here that we might only use for a year, at the max, maybe two. I know you said you might use one or two at a, at a listening station or something of the sort. But are we just going to have a, are we overbuying is kind of my question? And how do you foresee those devices being used at those levels?
Yeah, so one, one thing that we do have is we do have other iPads already in our, in our district that will eventually age out. And so if we get in a situation where we feel confident that devices will not have to go back, like in a COVID-type of a situation, as third, fourth, fifth grade iPads begin to age out, we can be, shift some of those pre-K through two iPads back up to older grade levels and then repurpose them that way. So we can do this on a year-by-year or even within a year. But typically, we are looking at having to refresh iPads over time. And so, yeah, if we, if we get past 2020, 21, and say our need has dropped and we, we feel a relatively high confidence, then we also be looking at not, not purchasing replacement iPads for another generation or grade level that currently has them.
Seeing no one unmuted right now, I'll just ask Abby. Commissioner Lyons talked about kind of a hybrid model between purchase and lease. And Jim, you mentioned, you know, that you kind of front, front-load some of the costs. And you talked a little bit about, you know, if they're stolen, you know, if they're stolen and we already purchased it, we're still out that money, you know, it's, maybe it avoids a little bit of the percentage on the leasing. Abby, if you could talk to me about what the, what the percent interest is? That's just more of a curiosity question to me. And then I guess my question is, you came in, the, the recommendation was just full lease. And even in, even in view of a hybrid, I purchase lease, I think, why should we lease as opposed to, you know, buy some of them and lease the others?
Sure. Jim, do you remember when we calculated out the lease rate? I wanted to say it maybe was like two-point-four percent.
I thought it was two-point-six, but around there, yep.
Yeah. Okay. So it was relatively cheap, I guess, in the big scheme of things to lease it for the four years. I think that, you know, we could look at a hybrid model. I think my biggest concern would be, you know, how do we get rid of the ebbs and flows with the budget? You know, so if we were going to purchase at all, you know, we're talking a five-million-dollar price tag. And how do we do that not knowing where our state budget's going to land? If I was really confident that we were going to get the additional funds that the state had approved in the biennial budget, you know, maybe this conversation looks a little bit different. But I am very concerned that, you know, there's lots of talk happening at the legislature that they have to figure out what is our need going to look like. And I don't think we're going to know that for a while because I think they're still trying to figure out from the state level, what do things look like? I mean, it's, we certainly could investigate, you know, kind of a hybrid model. I would want, you know, I guess our recommendation really for the lease part was to kind of flatten that and just have a certain dollar amount each year committed to the lease. And then we just knew we were committing, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not even going to guess a number, but we're just, you know, are set in that dollar amount each year. And then that helps provide that stability. And we know that we are committed to those devices. And then once the lease is up, then again, as Jim said before, those devices are ours. So we can choose to release at that point. We can choose to, you know, kind of see what does it look like? Do we need to release them all? Or can we, you know, is it half of them that we need to lease, depending upon what the, the device looks like? One thing that we do, that we have done in the past, and I would assume we would do this going forward as well, any devices that are usable and are in good shape, we would try to, we put them out on GovDeals. And last year, when we had purchased some new iPads, we were successful in selling many of our iPads that we had on hand, you know, to community members and to whoever was looking on the GovDeal site. So we always try to recoup whatever investment that we possibly can from that aspect as well because maybe it's not of huge value to the Eau Claire School District, but there might be somebody in our community that's looking for a device as a second one or, you know, whatever. So we do try to be good stewards of taxpayer money and try to get any, recoup anything that we possibly can. And I think just like Jim said before, we certainly could look at, you know, kind of a mixed model for leasing and purchasing. I just don't know where our comfort, I don't know where my comfort level is right now just knowing, not knowing what that state budget is going to be. And we've already made, you know, four-point-two million dollars in commitments for 2021. And so that, just that number makes me a little bit nervous in the big scheme of things, so.
Sure. Thank you, Abby. Then my follow-up question is one that I, I think I let you know about earlier in the week when we were chatting. It's that, you know, the, the lease seems like a good option because, as you said, it smoothes it out. It's very predictable what our costs are going to be. But I brought up in the fall, when we, when we leased the first set, that it's great because it seems like a cost savings or it's smooth, but you then are committed for four years of making payments. And now we have two stacks of committing. And presumably this, you know, because of that, at least, and I know you're talking about putting in some sort of fixed budgetary item that's going to be dedicated to that. I, and I'm sure that the answer is yes, because we already talked about it. But I would love to have you assure me that you and your department have a plan and know that this is coming because it's deferring some of that cost, but that we're still going to have to pay it, and it's going to affect our budget down the road. I just want to hear you tell me you, you're, it's in the, the plan and you're ready to tackle that as it comes.
Yeah, I think that, you know, again, kind of our goal is to get to a flat dollar amount every year that we're committing to. And so let's just fast forward, we're four years down the road and we need to lease, you know, new devices. And so again, we would do the same thing that we did this time. What does it look, what does it look like to lease them? What does it look like to purchase them? My guess is we're going to be in a similar situation. And, you know, a five-million-dollar price tag is probably too much for us to, you know, kind of pay for all at once. And so that, and that's the thing with leasing as, as well. Once you kind of get into that cycle, you're kind of committed to that cycle because of the fact that you've committed for four years. And then when you get to the end, that capital outlay is much more than you can handle. We also are doing this in the buildings and grounds area with our vehicles. And I think you'll remember that as well because we talked about that last year. And so what it does is you get a newer fleet and more efficient vehicles and, you know, cost savings there. And the devices are kind of the same way. You start out with newer devices, and then at the end of the four years, it's, it's older, but it might not totally be obsolete at that point. But it just really, it commits you to that refresh cycle versus, you know, making a purchase that we did. We, the devices that we need to replace now were purchased probably, gosh, Jim, was it 2012, 2011? I might have lost them.
Sorry about that. So back in, yep, back in 2012, we were having that conversation about Microsoft settlement money. And when we were able to purchase our first round of devices, the question back then was, okay, this is great, but what happens when they become, when they come due again to be replaced? And really, we didn't have, we had no habits built into budgeting for devices.
Yep.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from board members? Commissioner Zer?
Yeah, I just want to come back really quick to the curricular part of it. And Jim, maybe you can speak to it. But just can you clarify for me again? Are, we're not looking at, just because we're going one-to-one or pre-K to two, we're not looking at a, a large bump long-term in technology usage at those grade levels, correct?
No.
Just, this is just COVID that we're really talking about right now.
This is, and like I said, it will, there are some very small applications that are discreet in terms of, like I talked about, listening centers. There's, there's some opportunities for, there were some, we actually had piloted at the pre-K level some math stations. But again, it's much, they're more station-based rather than individual student-based. So you're right, that we're not, we're not planning to overhaul and make the pre-K two curriculum, move away from play-based learning and into a full immersive electronic experience.
If there are no other comments or questions, I would be willing to hear a motion on this issue.
I'd like to move, uh, accept the recommendation to lease.
And I would second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Harder and seconded by Commissioner Lyons to approve the lease option. Is there a discussion on the motion? Commissioner Clements? Hearing no discussion, let's take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordin?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
All right, the motion is unanimously approved. Before we move to our committee report for the evening, I did neglect to go back to Mr. Johnson for his announcements after the HR report, and we'll take care of that now. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Commissioner Nordin. Very excited to talk about a couple, a couple of our candidates here. We've got Trevor Colt graduated from the University of Wisconsin La Crosse with a Bachelor of Science in PE in 1996. He also earned a Master's Degree from Winona State University in Educational Leadership in 2000. He holds licenses through the Wisconsin DPI as a principal, FIAID teacher, and adaptive FIAID teacher. Trevor originally began his time with the Eau Claire Area School District during the 1996-97 school year as a FIAID teacher. He worked as a teacher at South Middle School, the Long Middle School, and Memorial High School up through the 2003-2004 school year. For the 2004 and 2005 school year, he was the Dean of Students at Memorial High. From 2005 to 2015, he was Assistant Principal. And from 2015 to 19, he was Principal of Memorial. During his time at Memorial, Trevor also coached basketball and golf. In 2019, he left the Eau Claire Area School District to work for EO Johnson as an account executive. He's returning now as the principal at South Middle School. Welcome back to Trevor. Next, Rebecca Graff graduated from the University of Oklahoma with a Bachelor of Science in Education and English Language Arts. She also received a Master's Degree from the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire in Education Professional Development. She's licensed through the Wisconsin DPI to be a superintendent and district administrator. Becky worked as an English teacher at North High School in Eau Claire from 1989 to 2001. From 1991, or from 1999 to 2001, she was also an adjunct faculty member at UW Eau Claire. From 2001 to 2009, she worked as a Senior Associate for Peak Learning Systems, providing long-term support for districts implementing the Peak Teaching for Excellence Model. She worked as a Curriculum and Instruction Director for Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools from 2009 to 2018. In 2018, Becky founded the Big Learn to provide school-based coaching tools and resources linked to literacy. And in October 2019, she began as a long-term substitute for the Eau Claire Area School Districts as Director of Academic Services. Becky is now joining us as the Permanent Director of Academic Services. Becky is now joining us as the permanent Director of Academic Services. Congratulations to Becky.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Welcome to our junior administrative hires. As a parent of a South student, I wish you the best of luck, Mr. Coler. I think we are now ready to adjourn to committee. We have one item for report and discussion tonight. That is the Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Committee Report. Turn it over to Kim Coler.
Thank you. Um, I, I messaged the host. I think I'm sharing my screen. Is that correct, Maida?
Yes, that's correct, Kim. You should be the presenter now.
Thank you. So I'm going to try.
We're seeing it now, Kim, so go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you. So, um, I, um, first of all, good evening. Thank you for being here. Um, I have with me tonight, um, Margot Dolling, who is the Chair of the Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Committee. Um, so Marissa, I'm not sure if Margot has been unmuted, um, but if you could do that, we would appreciate it.
She's all set. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Margot. Um, tonight, Margot and I would like to share with you the recommendation of the committee related to element, elementary expansion at some of our elementary schools. The committee, um, is committed to the, um, strategic plan of the Eau Claire School District and, um, providing a quality experience to each student so that they're college and career-ready. And when we look at that strategic plan, um, I, I would just like to take, um, some time to, um, share with the board that, um, enrollment and capacity in, um, any school, um, has a strong influence on academic achievement, a strong influence on the social, um, and emotional growth of our students and, um, really, um, helps to provide that collaborative, um, environment with family and community partners. And so with that, I would like to take, um, this opportunity to turn the presentation over to Margot, who is going to share with you, um, the long-term recommendation of the demographic trends and facilities planning committee.
Hello. Thanks for, um, having me tonight. Um, I just wanted to talk about, first of all, the things that over the last few years that the committee has presented. So in April of 2016, the committee recommended those short-term boundaries to relieve the pressure at Roosevelt. Um, and then in May of 2017, the committee recommended new boundaries for the high schools. And, um, and then in July of 2019, the committee recommended those new boundaries for the seven elementary schools and the two middle schools. Um, earlier this year in April, the committee, uh, recommended some temporary, short-term flexible boundaries to relieve the pressures at Mann's, Meadowview and Robbins. And that brings us to this evening where, um, we are before you to recommend a facility plan to address the long-term elementary school needs in the district. Um, so last year, uh, the committee discussed that one of the challenges in balancing enrollment was that several of the overcrowded schools were within a few miles of each other. And you can see on this chart that Meadowview, Mann's and Putnam are all schools that concern the committee. Um, Meadowview and Putnam Heights are both over 90% capacity and Mann's has been around that 90% capacity mark for the last several years. In, um, April of 2020, we recommended a short-term relief plan to Meadowview and Mann's, um, with some flexible boundaries as, uh, shown here. So each of the families had received a, a letter and a phone call by the administration department and then a follow-up by email. Um, as of today, 13 students in choice area one has cho, has chosen to attend Robbins and 11 from choice areas two and three have a chose, have chosen to attend Meadowview. While it does reduce enrollment at Meadowview by 11 students, it's only a 2% reduction in overall capacity at Meadowview. So this short-term plan provided minimal relief. As a result, for the past several months, the committee has focused on providing a more long-term uh, solution to providing relief to the schools that are experiencing that overcrowding. And in doing so, we're committed to the following, following the principles of the committee that you have, you can see listed on this slide. So, um, the committee would like to emphasize our work within the first two principles. The first being the reliable current and projected demographic and in, and housing impact data from internal and external sources. And then the second, utilization of best practice research. Our committee work began with an analysis of demographic trends, including, um, this included enrollment trends over the past decade, mapping students within the boundary by age and household, contacting, um, city planners and townships regarding building permits, um, and examining projections from the Applied Populations Lab study, reading about the benefits and challenges within various sizes of elementary schools. Um, and then learning from the principals about how the overcrowding impacts the educational opportunities within their own schools. Um, and this study was the foundation of our work and conversations over the, um, past few months as we have, as we have explored long-term options. So the committee explored the several options that 2017 and 2019, we reviewed those new boundaries between all of the elementary schools in the district. But the proximity of Mann's, Meadowview and Putnam were a barrier to that. No matter what option was developed, the location of the The committee also explored adding mobile classrooms to the schools, um, keeping in mind that we are looking for more of a short-term solution. Um, but the committee learned that there's a very limited number of these, um, units available and businesses that do provide them. So, um, only one had been willing to provide an estimate and the company only had, um, units with eight classrooms. And then the timeframe and cost of the district for preparing the site make that option difficult to achieve. Um, and then the committee also explored the creation of flexible boundaries similar to what happened to relieve the pressure of Roosevelt in 2016. And it would be cost neutral for transportation and provide families' choice in those identified areas. Um, we also discussed options for expanding facilities and increasing the overall capacity of the existing elementary schools in the district. Um, and based on the barriers present, this would be the only option that, um, was explored in depth. I'm sorry, that was an option that was explored in depth. Um, so we looked at four possible ways to expand facilities. The first being, um, building a new elementary school. The second was building additions at Mann's, Meadowview and Putnam Heights. Um, the third, adding on to Meadowview and Putnam Heights. And then the last option would be adding on only to Meadowview. Um, tonight, uh, we will take some time and explore these in depth. So one of the things that was important to the committee was providing a long-term solution. And one of the areas identified that needed expansion was the south of I-94, um, boundary area. Uh, we discovered through this, um, discussion that it had limited water and sewer services and, um, would require a long timeline to implementation. And that would leave the other facilities that needed, um, need, had other needs, um, without, uh, without a plan. So the estimated cost for that would be 30 to 40 million for a new school and would add between 450 and 550, um, new seats. Um, while looking at these principles, it does provide, um, equitable access to programs and services and it balances, um, enrollment within the capacity and provides an option that would, um, maintain the boundary changes for that minimum of five years, which is a committee principle. Um, it would also minimize transportation time and cost, which is a concern at the elementary level and provide that minimum of three sections, um, for each, uh, grade level at the school and provide seating for 450 students with room for expansion and also allow siblings to remain in the same school. Um, for the next option, um, that would be the addition to Mann's, Meadowview and Putnam Heights. The committee also felt that this was a good long-term solution. And, um, the great option here would be that a lot of the families would experience, uh, improved facilities. And it would be, we would be able to address additional concerns in the facility, um, at the same time. We would also be able to provide kind of a fitting volume, um, to, uh, reduce costs in those construction projects throughout the district. And then, um, the impact, but however negative would be that the impact on summer programming, um, with multiple projects going on in schools that are very close in location, um, would be an issue to, uh, a potential negative consequence of this option. So the estimated cost was about 16 million and we would add about 470 additional seats at those three schools. Um, the next slide, please. Um, the additions to Meadowview and Putnam Heights. Um, this would be a solution to address those immediate concerns at those two schools that are, um, in approaching or already at that crisis point for capacity. Um, and it would require further action or further referendum, um, as capital improvement would still be urgent to Mann's to handle. Um, and we would still require boundary changes to relieve the pressure at Mann's, um, so they could be more comfortable within their existing capacity. Um, the estimated cost of this option is just over nine million. And then we would add about 310 seats to the two schools. So I guess one of the, the benefits would be that, um, we would be maintaining those existing buildings versus building new construction. And then, um, providing that three-section grade level arrangements with 450 students, um, available for expansion. And then that would, um, maximize that educational and operational efficiency of facilities. Um, moving to the last option, which would be the only addition to Meadowview, which is the school in the tightest capacity stream. We would be providing that partial solution to these immediate concerns, but it would require further action and future referendum to deal with the capacity issues. Um, the estimated cost would be 7.1 million and only add additional 150 seats. Um, we decided as a committee that this does not fall within the guiding principles. The solution does not fall within those guiding principles of our committee. Um, but would be the lowest cost problem that would, um, kind of put that Band-Aid over the capacity constraints. So, uh, in review, the committee explored these four options. Um, again, they're number one to building the new school. Um, number two additions to Mann's, Meadowview and Putnam Heights. Number three, uh, additions to Meadowview and Putnam Heights. And then option four would be, um, just addition to Meadowview. Um, the estimated costs are also on the slide, um, for your review as well. And then importantly, important to note would be the number of seats added with each option. Um, next slide, please. So based on the analysis of the demographic and trends data, the results of each solution and the guiding principles of the committee, the additions to Mann's, Meadowview and Putnam Heights are the long-term solution to relieve the elementary crowding in the district. As we had stated, the option follows the principles and guidelines set out for the committee and it provides a viable solution to the overcrowding issues in this area of the district. Um, with that, I will hand it over to Kim.
So the committee also recommend, recognizes that, um, the option will require a referendum and that this will likely only be one of several items, um, within the referendum. So if the recommended option isn't feasible within the ref, referendum, and we know you have a lot, um, to weigh. If it's not feasible within the ref, referendum, the committee felt that the next best option would be to add on to Meadowview and Putnam Heights only. Um, however, we want to caution you that we believe that option to add on just to Meadowview and Putnam Heights is a shorter-term solution that does not meet all of the principles um, that the committee is charged with. And if the board were to choose option B, um, we believe that the board would find itself having a very similar conversation to what we're having today, um, in the very near future. And, um, Margot and I would be happy, um, to entertain any questions or comments that you have for the committee at this time.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Margot. Uh, as you well know, three of the current board members served on demographic trends and facilities planning. So I'm sure that, uh, many of us are very interested in your recommendation and we've been a part of this work for a long time and it's, uh, for me, it's personally very fulfilling to see this come to a recommendation. It's been a lot of hard work and we recognize, uh, how much this committee has dedicated their time and thought and effort to bringing this to us. And I, I just want to express my appreciation for that as I open it up to comments and questions. We'll start with Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, I, I have, uh, I, I have two, uh, specific questions. One, could either one of you speak to the, the increase in building capacity and, and seats added? That it automatically equates to, uh, class size reduction?
It, it can. Yes. A, a part of what happens right now is, um, when we look at, um, the number of students and we look at staffing in a school that's not overcrowded, we, we know that we can easily follow that targeted class size, um, the range of students. So depending on the grade level, um, you know, we have a, a kind of a targeted range for the number of kids in the classroom. Um, when we come to schools like Mann's, um, Meadowview and Putnam Heights, often the first thing that I need to do when we look at having, um, students that might, the number of students that might merit another teacher, one of the things I need to do is call the principals to say, do you have room to add another classroom? And, um, sometimes they do and sometimes they don't. If they don't, we try to be more creative with our solutions. Um, perhaps offering a general school assistant to be with a grade level, um, or creating kind of a half-class that might fit within a resource room. Um, but we, we don't automatically get to kind, go to the solution that we would typically do, which is add another section or add another teacher to, to lower those class sizes.
Okay. And then my, 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 my second question, uh, with the additions to the three, uh, elementary schools with the recommended, what, what is loss, uh, as it relates to adding on the addition? And I'm particular, uh, as an advocate of physical activity, what's lost as it relates to uh, playground recreational space? What's lost as it relates to, uh, parking for staff and community members? And then what's the impact as it relates to traffic volume within addition as, as it pains to like each of those commu, uh, neighborhoods where the, uh, schools will find themselves having these, the add-on? Was that discussed, talked about?
It was. Marco, do you, do you want to address that question?
Sure. Um, of the, the three elementary schools, uh, we reviewed the site plan and the acreage, uh, for each school. Um, I guess we were also reviewed the green space and, um, the playground space and with the changes that would need to, uh, happen at those schools. Um, if we were to add on to the buildings and then the additional, um, the additional students. So we did put on a list of pros and cons that we did consider this. Um, and, uh, one of the cons to adding on to Mann's was yes, the loss of green space and playground, but we believe that, um, as part of the budgetary cost that we had put forth, that we would, um, kind of adapt to a new playground or green space, or not green space, but new place space for the children. Um, so that, that wouldn't be impacted. We also reviewed, um, Kim brought forth some studies as to what the recommendations were for green space, um, for students, and that was really inconclusive. And, um, we kind of felt that the needs inside of the building were greater, um, at this point than, um, a, a ton of extra space outside. And all three of these schools did have more space than some of the other elementary schools in the district. So, um, Kim, did I kind of cover everything that we had discussed?
Yes, I think you did.
And then, and then as it relates to that, uh, that, that parking for staff and community and the traffic volume, you know, I think as, as, as a, as a parent of, uh, uh, of Mann students, a current Mann student, and one that came through, I think we all know, uh, uh, pickup and drop-off, uh, given where the, uh, s, a school finds where the school finds itself situated, becomes somewhat of a challenge. Does this plan or these additions take that into consideration in terms of, does it add or diminish how traffic maneuvers through during a drop-off and pickup? Because I could say that Mann's, it's pretty tight most days.
One of the members on our committee is Darryl Peterson, who is our Director of Buildings and Grounds. And one of the perspectives that he provides is that perspective in knowing, you know, what does traffic volume look like or what areas do we need to refine just based on, on current experience? Additionally, he also has a good handle on what are some of the needs within the building in addition to needing six additional classroom spaces for, you know, another section. So as an example, at Meadowview, one of the, one of, part of the plan would include, for example, increasing the gym space. And if we increase the gym space, then how does that impact the parking, which then could impact the green space? So he has a nice handle on kind of the domino effect of adding things and offers that perspective. So those have been things that we've talked about. We know we will need to reconfigure some of the parking spaces. We may also need to reconfigure a bus drive or perhaps give a school a bus driveway if they don't have one. So those are parts of our conversation. If this recommendation is approved, one of the things that Darryl would do is he would work with Holly Kitchell, our facilities manager, and they would commission an architectural study. And those details come out in, in a full-fledged architectural study once we believe that we're moving forward with something like this, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Lyons.
I was wondering with the shifting within the elementary schools, if it would put any pressure on any one of the middle schools or if it's, if the numbers stay pretty constant.
Margot, would you like to answer that or would you like me to?
We did review the middle schools. However, like the, the needs for these students are already there, and the middle schools were within the capacity that the, of the, sorry, excuse me, within the capacity guidelines for the demo and trends committee. Kim, feel free to expand on that.
Sure. So each of these students, each of the students that currently attend the middle schools are already, or attend these elementary schools are already tracked to attend certain middle schools. So adding the space, I don't think necessarily will impact the middle schools until the spaces become full. And then we, we might need to, to visit middle schools. I will tell you that looking past this recommendation, one of the things that the committee will likely do is come to the board and ask for our next charge. What specifically would you like us to study and, and come forward with next? And so if middle schools are something that you would like us to study, certainly that's an area we can explore next.
Commissioner Zer.
Thanks, Kim and Margot. Could you guys speak a little bit to the process? And this is just maybe my newness showing, the process by which staff are consulted in these staff and principals, you know, all building staff, particularly specialists, I think, as these schools fill up. I mean, what, what we've seen with Robbins, and this could just be my, my understanding of it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Robbins has two PE teachers now because of the size of it, correct? So how, how in the process of these schools potentially getting larger is the staff consulted? And how are, how is staff added? How do principals feel? Because obviously, you know, when you get a middle school that starts, or an elementary school that starts to edge up to the size of a middle school or something like that, is the administrative capacity of, of that building stable? How do specialists feel? And how, what, what is the process by which we consult staff and administrators in buildings and, and go about adding staff as these spaces fill up?
Margot, do you want to talk a little bit about the principal participation in the committee? And then I can talk a little bit about staffing beyond that.
Sure. Over the past few months, starting in, I believe, January of this year, we did invite principals to sit and answer questions of the committee at one of our meetings. And then Kim had sent out like a questionnaire and asked them to provide details as far as what their school capacity was in terms of like resource rooms, art rooms, if they had a computer lab, if they had different, what they were using for their resource space and those types of things so we could better focus the attention on the schools that needed them. So we also have, on the committee, some people that are present at those schools as well. So that definitely helped bring that perspective. So I will let Kim kind of speak to more of the specifics on that.
And then, once the, the seats are available and if those seats start to fill up and we start to see the enrollment of the schools increase, our human resources department is constantly reviewing staffing allocations and staffing requirements. So we would naturally expand or contract staffing based on student enrollment. So as a school becomes larger, the, through our natural processes and our annual reviews, the staff becomes larger. If enrollment decreases, staffing decreases with that. So that's kind of an organic process that we already have built in.
For my part, I'll just say thank you for the thoughtful work that you've done covering all those bases. I know from being in meetings during my time on the committee, working on some of the other issues that were on the timeline, just how exhausting it can be for committee members and for administration liaisons to work through all of those details. And I think that you've done a great job again of, of looking at the angles and anticipating many of our questions. To go back to what Commissioner Zer was asking, and Margot, you touched on this, I, at least last time, I, I think Heather Grant, who is the principal at Mann's actively serves on the committee. So when you, when you look in the terms of the Mann's context, that voice is always present. And then, you know, we had input from Heidi McNeilan over at Putnam and Kurt Madsen at Meadowview in that time. And I'm sure the principals of those, the new principals of those schools will be brought into the process. I'm appreciative of that. We do have still some time for other comments and questions from board members. This is not an action item for tonight. It is something that will be rolling into our consideration as we build our referendum question. So there is not the same kind of urgency at this point, since we, we have a few more months before we really have to finalize where we're going with it. In the, that means that we do have more time to ask questions if they arise after tonight and if we need to have Kim and Margot come back and have a, have an open session to discuss more if we have more questions as we get closer to finalizing what we're looking for in the referendum question. We can do that. Commissioner Harder, it looks like you have something.
I just wanted to say thanks for all the hard work on this. I know it's been a long time coming and we've been thinking about it. It's, it's particularly important and interesting to me as, from the perspective of budget development and the referendum work we're doing, this is an, an important and large piece of the puzzle. So it's great to see it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, I, another question that I had. So let's assume that we're able to expand at all three sites. Does the school district, do we then redo our, our, our boundary mapping?
That would be something that we would examine. If we, we believe that if we only added on to one school, and, and so we explored adding on to Meadowview, first of all, it would not relieve pressure. We would still have two schools that we would be worried about. Could we shift some boundaries and maybe offer a little bit of relief, perhaps? But it, it likely would be a very small Band-Aid for a much larger problem. If we added on to just two schools, which we said, okay, as you, as you look at the referendum and you guys have, you know, tough decisions to make, if you need an option B, Putnam Heights and Meadowview could be an option B, we would, it would require boundary shifts because Mann's is still at that very crowded point. And with adding on to only two schools, we, we would need to relieve some pressure at Mann's. So that would require some boundary changes. If we add on to all three schools, we would examine the boundaries. We, we try to balance enrollment across schools so that, you know, kind of, we would say our sweet spot would be 75 to 85% capacity. That's really where a school runs efficiently and it feels comfortable. So we would have to, at the time that the construction starts, you know, we would, we would be looking at what is the total enrollment versus the number of seats we have? And, and do we want to shift some boundaries to balance enrollment? Because that's a couple of years out likely, and because the construction in that part of the district continues, we, we probably would wait until we're closer to construction to examine those boundaries. It's the potential in, in some situations, I would say, in adding to all three, it's a potential. It's a certainty if we don't add to all three.
I, I guess that part of it was having not seen the, the trend data, but just from an observational standpoint, if you, you think about the level of growth on, on, on the south side of town, I'm, I'm not sure that, I think you just said 75%. I, I'm not sure those three schools will, even with the addition, get back to a recommended 75% capacity. So I'm, I'm just curious about.
Kim, maybe we could go back to like the fourth slide that had the enrollment trends?
Do you want to talk a little bit about this slide, Margot? Or do you just want them to be able to see it?
Well, I mean, we pulled some permit data and all those, those things that we could from the city and evaluated how many students we could estimate that those currently permitted developments would add. And then reviewing the trends for the three schools that are of concern. As you can see, two of the three are in red. Mann's has been in red for the past two school years and did have a little bit of relief in this last 2019 to 2020 school year. But they're above kind of that sweet spot that Kim has talked about and then are projected to remain at or above these ranges currently. So, Kim, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I, I think another thing that we talked about, I think Putnam Heights demonstrates this exactly what you were talking about, Dr. Johnson. If you look at the enrollment at Putnam Heights in 2015, 16, 16, it was 397 students. 2019, 20 was 432. It's on a steady incline. So adding to that school in a couple of years, I, you know, I would project based off this data that that incline will likely continue or perhaps even if it does stabilize, 432 will be a healthy-sized school for, for a four-section school. When we look at permits and, and projected building, we know that kind of that Highway 93 corridor is a popular place to build. We also know that a, I believe, a 200-unit apartment complex was approved directly across the highway from Meadowview, which will certainly impact that school. So some of this we anticipate will impact enrollment in, in these areas. And, and as we see that play out, certainly we'll, we'll watch the percent capacity that you see here. If you look at the color legend, you can kind of see, you know, once, once it starts to turn orange, it's definitely on the committee's radar. When it turns red, we're really looking for, for some action in, in fairly quick order to help the school out.
Thank you again. Given that it's nine o'clock and I have committed to many people to be done by nine o'clock tonight, I'm going to ask for this particular item to be done for discussion for tonight. Of course, if there are other questions, please, board members submit them to Kim via email. And if there is desire for additional time to discuss this, we can certainly have the committee come back and report. Commissioner Lyons, I'm sure you're familiar with coming to give multiple reports to the board from your time on the committee. At this point, I would ask for any requests for future agenda items.
I would just ask if, if we can circle around to that question on, on the middle schools with, with the demo and trends committee at some point in the near future.
Sure, we'll need to make a, we'll need to have a new charge. Certainly, we, you know, even Dr. Johnson's, you know, some quick math here in my paper. If we added on today to Meadowview, they would drop to slightly below 75% capacity. So certainly it's not going to be the last time that we discuss capacity issues in ECASD. So, yeah, we can get that on the docket, and that will certainly help demo and trends know which way to go. Okay, agenda setting for our July 20th meeting will be tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. And I would accept a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:01 a.m. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, our meeting is adjourned. Great job, everybody.
Thanks.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.